Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please, with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Lomb.
Yes.
Odie.
Yeah.
Clatt.
Saxor.
Yeah.
Schrader is absent.
Yep. That takes us to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda tonight before we approve it? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented tonight. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Conflict of interest disclosure waiver requests? There are none this evening. That takes us to approval of the minutes from the regular board meetings on May 14th and May 29th. Were there any corrections to those minutes that anyone would like to make? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented, please. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No community input tonight, so that takes us to financial items, bills and claims. Mr. Lombard.
Questions from the board? A listing of bills. I did have a few earmarked. On page three, East Dakota Educational Cooperative Co-op Services, that's overages on the high-impact career academy, alternative school at the high school. I think we budgeted for like 19 slots and we used 23, 24. Just below that, First National Bank, the bond payment. That is a bond payment for Fred Assam Elementary and the high school addition, not the intermediate school, the second one. They're both interest payments, but this is for Fred Assam, $277,000. Page five, Houghton Mifflin at the top of the page, $39,135,000 portion of the social studies adoption for the elementary school. The next page on page eight, the intermediate school and the middle school, social studies adoption, total of 70 or $52,000. Page seven, I had Pesca Construction note, $105,000, high school classroom remodel payment, number one. Got a good start on that project, a total project of $450,000. Pay up, first pay up is $105,000. As I said, that second bond payment on page nine, also the First National Bank, that is for the intermediate school, $90,000. Total on page 10 of $883,000. Breakdown of advance payments at $15,163. Pay vouchers for the month of June, $67,412 of substitute teaching, bus driving. Curriculum pay vouchers, $10,280. Pay in lieu of personal days, $42,199. Pay in lieu of unused sick days, $46,025. Food service bills for the month of June, $71,227.
Thank you very much. Any questions from Mr. Lombard on the bills and claims? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented tonight. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lombard.
Okay, the cash report for the month of May, had $5.1 million coming into the month, a big cash receipt month of 8.3, just under 8.3 million. Dispersed $2,758,000, left 10.7 million at the end of May. Of which 7 million was in the general fund, 1.7 million in the capital outlay, $445,000 in the special education fund, $342,000 in the pension fund, $943,000 in the bond redemption fund, and $65,000 in the enterprise fund. The receipts are itemized in the next two pages. The $8.2 million, $8,292,000 receipts, of which $6,655,000 were receipts for taxes. Investment report of $1 million. Payroll for the month of May was $1,768,000. And the actual financial reports through May, which is just under 92% of the fiscal year expended. The first two pages are the revenues. You can see how they compare to last year. I have nothing noted on the revenues from any of the funds. The one big item that we have left to come is electric co-op utility tax. On the expenditures, first page is the general fund. 90.52% year-to-date at the end of May. That will project out to 99.7, as we've talked about before. And last year was 99.3. We, as I've said before, we budget to 100%. And that's, so in theory, that should come out to right at 100% every year. And we get sometimes lulled into a 99 or a 98% number there, and you just cannot, can't get lulled into that every year because it'll, it comes in at 99.7, which is what'll come in this year. And every time there is a variance, there's a factor that creates that variance, generally a weather-related factor, easy winter or something like that are generally the biggest things. Like this year, we had heating fuel. It was $15,000 over budget. Bus fuel was $20,000 over budget, so certain things that happen each year that you can't control, prices go up, prices go down. As I talked about, the high-impact program being $30,000 over at the high school. Things go up, things go down, so. Now, on the other hand, .3% of the general fund budget is $80,000. So it's, when you have a $26 million budget, it's, the small opportunities add up to quite a big dollar amount. Capital outlay fund, 84% versus 92% last year. Special ed fund is at 92.71% this year. This will project out probably right at 100% also. We have a bunch of out-of-district placements that we approved in the bills tonight. Pension fund is 100%. Bond redemption fund is 87, will be 100. The food service statement shows $87,000 profit. It was budgeted for $25,000 profit for the 1718 school year. Biggest factor there is the cost of goods sold, as you can see right in the middle of the page, budget of $850,000. Came in at $768,000. Cost of the food was less than budgeted. Lastly, the trust and agency statement shows $118,835 held for others. Any questions on any of those?
Mr. Lombard, can you speak to the investment report? It looks as though it maturity date was 6/1/18. Can you speak to what we will do with that and how that'll work?
Yes, we'll renew that certificate deposit for the $1 million. As of June 1st, we have renewed that actually at a rate of 1.7% for the $1 million for next year. So a little bit better than double it was this year, so it's going up, which is a good thing.
Any other questions for Mr. Lombard tonight on the financial report? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented tonight. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. That takes us to our general business items, administration reports. First, administrative center, Superintendent Larson.
Yes, Madam Chair, just want to give you a real quick update regarding our Link's summer reading program. Occurs every Wednesday at Brandon Elementary from June 6th to July 25th. We had a nice turnout for our first event, which was last week on June 6th. Approximately 55, 60 kids, give or take. I tell you, remind all of our parents and guardians that storytime will occur at 10:45 and 11:30 a.m., and then checkout is from 10:30 a.m. to noon. So the library's open 10:30 to noon, and then there's storytime at 10:45 a.m. and 11:30 a.m. And don't get, don't get stuck with it being storytime being for smaller children, because we had some third and fourth graders who were with us who were, I think enthralled would be the right word, with the story that we read last week. So certainly all ages are welcome, and certainly all ages can enjoy a good riddle out. So with that, our summer reading goals, our preschool students, 150 books, which aligns to that number of books before kindergarten, and then the JK, grades JK through 5, 600 Minutes, grades 6 through 12, five books. If students document that and meet the reading goal, there are a variety of prizes through Siouxland Library and then also through Pizza Ranch with buffet and game tokens for Country Fair. So there's a variety of prizes and awards for meeting those goals. Real quick, construction update, I would tell you the outdoor stadium, our synthetic turf project demo is in progress. As you come by, you'll see they've scraped off a majority of the turf, and they will begin hauling that out here in the very near future. And then, as Business Manager Lombard spoke to with the $100,000-plus dollar payment to Pesca, demolition is in progress, and I'm happy to note that they've also begun framing up some walls and some of those types of things. So that progress is moving along in a timely manner. And then I would also note that our wet pipe sprinkler system, the installation of that on the northeast corner of our high school building is in progress. Professional development opportunity for the school board and also our Brandon Valley administrators, the joint convention, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, August 9th and 10th. Feel free to let us know, board members, if you are able to attend, and we'll get you registered. And then as we prepare for next year, new staff will be with us the 16th. We'll have staff in service the 20th and 21st. Please note, all staff welcome back 10:30 a.m. on the 21st. Would certainly invite all of our board members as well as all of our staff to that event. And then first day for students is the 22nd. Special reminder that we will have our July board meeting on Monday, July 16th, which is the third Monday. That change is due to the 4th of July holiday and also our prior professional commitment to the School Nutrition Association National Conference. That is all I have to report this evening. Would note, school board election, June 19th. Get out and vote. With that, any questions you may have?
I don't hear any. Thank you very much, Superintendent Larson. Mr. Lombard, anything additional tonight? Thank you. High school, Dr. Telkot, Mr. Schleckaway? Middle school, no. Intermediate school, anything tonight? Mr. Bab, nope. Anybody, nope. Elementarys?
There you go. Okay, I just have one slide to share with you, besides this one. This is a chart from the folks from Houghton Mifflin Harcourt. They own Read 180 and System 44. We use Read 180 and System 44 in our middle school with our 7th and 8th grade students. Our Read 180 students are those students who have a harder time with reading than kids their own age. Our System 44 students are students generally on an IEP. So what I thought would be the best, there are like 35 slides in this whole report, this one is the bottom line. This one shows us the success our students have had with this program. And I will tell you that the company, people there fight over having to do our gains report every year, end-of-year gains, because they don't see scores like we offer them. These are over-the-top scores. They are fabulous. We are really proud of it, but a couple of great things about these scores is they carry over. Our Smarter Balance assessment scores right now, looking at them and comparing them with these scores, 30% of the kids that are represented in these bars jumped a level and some of them two levels on their Smarter Balance assessment. That's huge. For those who didn't jump levels on their Smarter Balance, most of them have improved from last year's score. So that's super important as well. I give all the credit to this program, but a program can't run itself. We have six fabulous teachers over at the middle school who use this program with fidelity. And every time we offer them any professional development with it, they participate in that, and the coach from the company comes in and praises us for how well they do with the program. But on top of this, last week Becky and I were at a state event put on by the Department of Ed, and Becky went to the table, the registration table, to grab a paper, and one of the people from the Department of Ed grabbed her and said, "Hey, I just wanted to let you know this. We noticed that across the state, the 5th grade scores really dip a lot." So the gal who was talking to Becky said, "But I said, 'Let's see how Brandon Valley did.'" And when they pulled up our scores, they go, "Well, they did really well." So since then, Becky got a phone call from one of the people in the assessment department. This was last Thursday. That gentleman has talked to her, "You guys use the interim assessments. We know you do. And you do so well on your assessments, and we know that you have this great reading program in your district. You have a reading protocol. We know you do some great things in both your intermediate and your middle school. We want to visit with you about what you guys are doing." So we know that people are watching us. We've had many schools from across the state, and I believe even a school from Iowa came over to see how we teach reading in our elementarys and in our middle school. But when the Department of Ed is also wondering, we know that we're doing something really, really great. So I just wanted to share that bread, because I kind of feel like the parent of all of this, and I just, you know, guide the folks that work with me to be the best they can, and they take it to the next level. And I want to thank you guys for supporting all of us as administrators, took most of the time, letting us do whatever it takes to see that our kids succeed. And personally, I want to thank you guys for all your support, for everything you've done during my tenure, my, as an employee here in the school district. And with that, do you guys have any questions about this?
Okay. Thank you very, very much. Awesome work. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Henchel, anything tonight? Mr. Marcel? All right, that takes us to, oh, a spot that we normally don't get to talk about very often, the highly stimulating board policy section. We have some discussion items. This ought to keep us all awake. I'm being joking in a funny way. I mean, it's very serious. I get it.
Absolutely. So these are about the most mundane policy items that I can bring forward. But the first one is the Board of Education Agenda Format. We have some tweaks and some changes basically to align to our current practice. You can see that we add conflict of interest disclosure waiver request. That was a recent statute change this last year, so that gets added in. Community input of where that's located at is different in practice than it was in policy, et cetera. You can see those yellow items for additions, really just making our practice reflected in policy. District transportation, these policies, items have been discussed with the Transportation Committee, but basically it's adding in consistent language that we have throughout our transportation policies, as there's many that govern the work that we do, but there's an item that is in other policies that we would include in this policy. So that would be one item to note, that that's just creating a consistent verbiage. This is again, item EACAA, basically tweaking it to, instead of transportation supervisor, we don't have a transportation supervisor, we have a transportation director. Again, just really, really cleaning up some of that language on those few items. Here's a student transportation item, EEAE, again, where we speak to eliminating, eliminating the language and the verbiage. I would tell you, I've worked with our Director of Operations, Mr. Henchel, on these items. So the elimination of, for example, the request for transportation change form, we don't utilize a request for transportation change form any longer. We contact the Transportation Department directly. So that would be an item that I would note, which it leads us to the elimination of the transportation change form within policy, not using it. It needs to be eliminated. On-call district vehicle usage policy, again, cleaning up that language to accurately reflect the individuals that are utilized within said policy. And then the rescue protocols, protocols, the recommendation coming out of the Director of Operations and myself would be to remove these, as they're protocols, not policies. We will utilize these types of items for staff trainings and whatnot, but find that they're not being consistently placed within our policy book, which is causing some issues as well. So those are some items to note regarding discussion items. Again, all of those items will come back for a proposed first reading, so we'll have ample opportunity to address any of those items that you may see. This is the proposed first reading of the prohibition of corporal punishment and administration of restraint and seclusion. So the additional verbiage of "and administration of restraint and seclusion" is the new wordage that we have to add in accordance to state statute. So what you see here is a policy that previously existed, and then we have put in additional language regarding restraint and seclusion. I would tell you that the additional language meets the letter of the law recently passed by our legislature, and this speaks to, this policy spoke to physical contact with kids, so it was a natural place to put it in, and it also eliminates the need for an additional policy. So that's why we melded these two together. So the additional language reads, "No employee of the Brandon Valley School District will use the method of prone restraint defined as pressure applied to any part of the student's body to keep the student in a face-down position on the floor or other surface except when that use is necessary and reasonable in manner and moderate in degree." I would note that we do not utilize prone restraint by any stretch of the imagination. It's not the way in which we train. The statute that was recently passed by our legislators originally said that it eliminated the use of prone restraint, 100%. Well, then the conversation about the Harrisburg incident with an individual that came in and made a violent attack at an individual, well, that individual was restrained, you know, prone restraint, face down, et cetera. They would have actually been in violation of the law physically handling that situation. So in the law, they went back and said, "The only time you could do it is when necessary and reasonable in manner." So that's why we cite, except when use is necessary and reasonable in manner and moderate in degree. So would note that that is not our practice by any stretch of the imagination, but want to cover ourselves in the event that it's absolutely necessary. Would also note that we, the new verbiage reads, "No student will be placed in involuntary confinement in a locked room alone unless there is clear and present danger." Again, not a practice of ours. We do not seclude individuals in locked rooms by any stretch of the imagination. I quite honestly don't even know if we have the ability to have that practice. But with that being said, if there is a situation whereas we need to, if we have the ability, again, I don't even know if we do, that would be something that meets the letter of the law, that the involuntary confinement is not appropriate or not allowed unless there's a clear and present danger. So then we go to the bottom, and that speaks to basically the reporting. So previously, we documented it, and it was, the copy was given to the principal by the close of the following school day. We've had to clean that up so that reads and is aligned to the statute. So now, any employee using physical force to control a student will document the incident in writing with copies being given, with copies given to the principal by the close of the school day. And the Brandon Valley School District will notify the parent or guardian of the student unless the student is emancipated of an incident requiring the use of restraint or seclusion. This will be done by the end of the school business day. And then the last line was already there. So that concludes the first reading of our policy, JGA, prohibition of corporal punishment and administration of restraint and seclusion would certainly entertain feedback and/or discussion on that item now. It will be brought back at our second meeting in June for its second reading and ultimate adoption, or I should say revision. It's important to note that that timeline needs to take place because as of July 1, 2018, the law that they passed comes into effect, and we do have summer school and those types of things going on, so we need to make certain that that policy is up to date prior to July 1. So with that, thoughts, feedback, concerns?
Doesn't sound like anything tonight, so just make sure if you have any questions in the interim, get ahold of Superintendent Larson, because we will be voting on the revision the next meeting. So, thank you very much. That takes us to general business item number one, cast ballot for South Dakota High School Activities Association Division II Representative for term of July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2021.
Madam Chair, it's the administrative recommendation to cast a vote for Randy Soma, Brookings High School. I believe, help me, Randy, if necessary, that this vacancy came about as Steve Moore, former athletic or activities director for the Watertown School District, took a position in the Sioux Falls School District, serving in Sioux Falls Roosevelt as their activities director. With that, after conferring with Member Clatt and our high school administration, Randy Soma would be, our administrative recommendation would certainly turn it over to Member Clatt if she has any items she'd like to add.
Okay. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to cast ballot for South Dakota High School Activities Association Division II Representative for term of July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2021 to Mr. Randy Soma from the Brookings High School. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. On number two, cast a runoff ballot for the South Dakota High School Activities Association Division IV Representative for term of July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2021.
Madam Chair, the individual that we voted for the first time around did make the finals, so it would be our administrative recommendation to vote for Paul Nepedal, Dewbrook Area High School. Again, defer to Member Clatt for any further comment.
No, the number of differences of vote between the top three candidates was like one or two votes, so very close.
Okay. Thank you. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to cast the runoff ballot for the South Dakota High School Activities Association Division IV Representative for term of July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2021 to Mr. Paul Nepedal, as recommended. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to item number three, the Brandon Valley School District 2018 to 2023 Strategic Plan Presentation, which we will have no action on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So available for distribution to the public and to yourselves is a paper copy of So available for distribution to the public and to yourselves is a paper copy of the draft strategic plan for the Brandon Valley School District. So I would just tell you, the contents within that is a title page, which outlines the five domains and our objectives, and then the second page is our core operating principle, mission statement, belief statements. Third page is a vision of a graduate that we have developed. Then we have a strategic planning dashboard, which ultimately outlines the domains, the components, and then some key items, and then we'll go through domain-specific items. So with that, I want to provide to you some participation by the members. So we started back in the spring of 2017, and we're working on finalizing and adopting our strategic plan here this summer. I would note that we had over 600 respondents to a need survey that we sent to our parents and made available to our public through dissemination in our local newspapers. We had over 25 strategic planning focus group meetings throughout the course of that 14 months. I tell you, there were over 50 individuals whom participated through our focus groups, and then we also had two public input meetings for our strategic planning process. So that gives you a little bit of an idea of the opportunity that our patrons had to be involved through the process. So with that, I would tell you that we identified and have focused on five domains, and then within each of those domains, two components. So the first domain is student achievement, and I would tell you that the specific areas that we have worked through regarding student achievement are identified as key components are academic excellence and character development. So with that, we want to provide rigorous, provide relevant and rigorous academics grounded in best practices. Staff development, the key areas that we're focusing on, professional development and work environment. Our objective is to support highly effective teachers, leaders, and staff. Facilities and operations, focus areas are quality facilities and growth management, and we want to provide safe, healthy, and supportive learning environments. Fiscal responsibility with focus areas or specific components identified, planning, short and long term, and also fund balances. Our objective is to practice effective, efficient, and sustainable business practices. And then lastly, parent-community relations with a focus on engagement, both parent engagement and community engagement. And I would tell you, our objective is to strengthen school, family, and community engagement. So with that, I'd tell you, as we work the process, each of the focus groups talked about what they held as fundamentals, fundamental beliefs for our success. So we had a lot of conversation about what do you believe fundamentally leads to success? So that was part of the process. And then another part of the process was conducting a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So with that, I want to share with you the three opportunities for growth that were identified collectively through all of our focus groups, through the feedback that we received from the patron survey, to the teacher focus group, to the administrative focus group, to the steering committee, all those folks. So as we worked through that SWOT analysis, we identified these three opportunities for growth collectively. I'd say there was a consensus built around these three opportunities for growth. So K4 STEM education is an area in which we believe there's an opportunity to grow and improve. Post-secondary education and career exploration is an area in which we believe there's an opportunity to improve. Help kids understand what opportunities are out there and what it would take to do that. And then also increase district-wide teacher collaboration. So those are three items that will be a focal point for opportunities for growth for the district, or at least that's outlined within the strategic plan. So I'll focus on our domain of student achievement first. Again, academic excellence and character development being the two components that we really honed in on. We want to provide relevant and rigorous academics grounded in best practices. So with that, goal one in student achievement, all students will improve their ability to read and comprehend. I will tell you that there was substantial discussion amongst the focus groups about whether or not to tie percentages to goal statements. So for example, we had conversation about, should the goal be, "All third-grade students will be proficient," or 100% of third-grade students will be proficient? Well, we talked about, is that a reasonable goal? Knowing that it's not a reasonable goal, that doesn't mean that we don't want all of our students to read proficiently by that level. So again, the consensus surrounding goal statements was, get rid of that percentage on those specific items and just make it that all students will improve their ability to read and comprehend. With that, I would note that in the small words down there below, you will see it, "Third grade reading proficiency is a key target." And that's important for you as a board to know and understand, because as an administration, we talk a lot and we work very hard on getting students proficient in reading by the end of third grade. The body of research that exists that speaks to what third-grade reading proficiency indicates is substantial, graduation rates, math proficiency, it goes on and on and on. That's just really a key target that we have to hit, which is when we talk about some of the strategies that our district has, whether it's our district reading protocol, our walk-to-read program, some of those things, really, really critical, is those play key factors in our third-grade reading proficiency. Now, that doesn't mean that third-grade reading proficiency is the only reading proficiency number that matters, we have to have those programs that help those folks that are behind schedule in the intermediate, middle school, et cetera. But third-grade reading proficiency, huge target, absolutely critical target. All students, yeah, I guess, all students will improve their mathematical skills. Fifth-grade reading proficiency is a key target. Again, based on the body of research that exists, that's a really, really critical component as we think about mathematical skills and indications of future success. All students will improve their science skills. Eighth-grade reading, eighth-grade science proficiency is a key target. So as we talk about those key targets, the other item to note is that those key targets are all key targets within the state of South Dakota's plan. They talk about proficiency at third grade in reading, fifth grade in math, eighth grade in science. So those are some items to note as we try and find continuity between what the big picture is doing and then what our big picture is all the way through our schools. So that's an item to note, that we align ourselves and work to align ourselves with our state. All students college or career ready by 11th or 12th grade. The reason I note 11th or 12th grade is because we, a lot of the assessment measurements that we take for that happen in 11th grade and also in 12th grade, whether it's the ACT, or whether it's the NCRCC, the National Career Readiness Certificate, those types of things are happening in those two grades. We put a number on this, 100% graduation rate. Graduation rate, and it's, I've written in my article before, and it's like hitting the lottery. For a longer better phrase, it's a half a million bucks in comparison to someone who doesn't obtain their high school diploma. So it's like hitting the jackpot. That's why it's critical that we continue to push for that 100% graduation rate. While our graduation rate is very, very good, but the ultimate target needs to be 100%. It's such an impactful thing for our kiddos. And then lastly, on our last component, we want to promote student character and positive school climate. Climate and culture have an absolutely incredible impact on student achievement, and that's why it fits so naturally within this domain. So those would be the goals for student achievement. I would, I just listed a few of our key action strategies. This is not all-inclusive by any stretch of the imagination, but I do note our district reading protocol, that is absolutely critical, and that is something that was here long before the strategic plan, but I can't emphasize that enough. An item that our high school administration is working on currently is post-secondary night, and that's in conjunction with a parent-teacher conferences. As long as we have those parents and those, potentially those kiddos here, can we engage them in some post-secondary planning, whether it be career exploration or post-secondary education exploration? So that's an item that we're working on, and that works with the other component of our strategic plan, or a component when we talk about increasing parent engagement, increasing attendances at conferences. Internships and apprenticeships, I would tell you that we will be working over the course of this next year with our local businesses, industry, commerce, et cetera, to try to expand our internship and apprenticeship offerings, working with our Chamber of Commerce on some of those types of plans. I've already met with them on that. That's been a big push from the governor's office. We were asked to kind of ramrod that, for lack of a better phrase, and I actually informed them we were going to step back and work through our strategic planning process and see if that's something that folks wanted, and it came about that that was an opportunity that we could better enhance our offerings to some kids. It's not going to be mandatory by any stretch of the imagination, but may provide a good opportunity for a portion of kids that it would meet their needs or best meet their needs. K4 STEM developments, as we previously talked about, work environment, as you hear a little bit about, little later about in the presentation, work environment is critical to student achievement. We need to start to assess that, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. And then lastly, with our promotion of student character and student, and culture and climate, speak to the links where our character program. So staff development, ultimately a focus on professional development and work environment. We want to support highly effective teachers, leaders, and staff. Our goals are as follows, provide relevant professional development. I think that that's really important when we think about what folks want. It has to be relevant to their work. Provide personalized professional development. I would tell you that Director Stoddard has done a great job of providing our teachers and building us platforms to provide our teachers with personalized professional development, with our ed camp, where they get to make selections on what they go to at in-service. In addition to that, our administration is going to be leading, each administrator or a group of administrators is going to be leading a year-long professional development experience for our staff this next year, and teachers get to pick what they want. So that's personalized learning, and that's the most powerful kind of professional learning that we can have. We need to provide professional development that's responsive to need. So when we conduct our need surveys with our staff, and we ask, "Was P D good, or what do you need, or what do you want more of?" For example, behaviors or technology, when they give us that indication and that feedback, we need to be responsive to that feedback and then create professional development that meets those needs. Increase district-wide collaboration, again, a goal that's established directly to an opportunity for growth that was built out of consensus within our focus groups. Provide a great working environment. Again, work environment is critical when we think about student achievement, and individuals who feel as though they're in a great work environment are happier in their job, put forth more effort, and ultimately lead us to better results. So that's a really critical thing. I would tell you that this last year, through the strategic planning process, our administrative council did some work regarding the research that exists about great work environments. I believe I shared that with the Board of Education, or the items that we outlined, meaningful communication that outline worth and value. Every employee every seven days needs some sort of positive reinforcement on the type of work that they're doing, and then also the social connections that individuals have within their working environment. The environment needs to be positive, collaborative in nature. So that's an item that we will focus on for staff development. So then, as we continue to talk about work environment, we need to assess and respond to work environment needs. I would, I tell you that we focused on work environment, but we have not assessed that yet. Over the course of this year, we'll do one of two things. We'll either develop a work environment assessment tool for our staff and all of our staff, our different classifications of employees, from teachers to EAs, bus drivers, et cetera, as we want to assess our work environment for all of those folks. We'll either create that, or we'll utilize a tool that's already been created. I'm not exactly sure which route we're going to go. As an administrative team, we will again take a look at the options and go from there. So as we talk about staff development, specifically professional development and work environment components, we want to support highly effective teachers, leaders, and staff, and a few key strategies, as we've talked about, teacher choice, Teachers Watching Teachers is a platform that I think is very interesting and has potential for us. I'm not saying we will do that, I'm not saying we won't, I'm saying it is worthy of evaluation and research. There's a desire to increase the availability of horizontal and vertical teaming. We will begin to assess our work environment, and then, as always, we will continue to evaluate and look at the research-based approaches to best practices in the area of staff development. Facilities and operations, focus on quality facilities and growth management. Provide safe, healthy, and supportive learning environments. Provide safe facilities utilizing best practices, these are our goals. Maximize facility efficiency as practically allowable. And the reason I write practically allowable, and that was the consensus that we came to working with our operations department, for example, geothermal heat, probably the most efficient heating way of heating a building. Well, it's not practical for us to make geothermal heat the heating source of all of our buildings when we consider the cost. So that's why we need to note that practically allowable. Effectively manage usable space, structures, and transportation. So as we grow and we think about our quality facilities, it's absolutely essential that we effectively manage what we have for usable space structures and transportation. Proactively manage student growth. As we anticipate our growth, we have student-growth teachers, et cetera, we utilize trigger points, those types of things, so it's essential that we continue to proactively manage our student growth. Research and investigate future growth areas. Where will our district grow? We always evaluate housing developments, those types of things, and we work with the local contractors and development folks to investigate where we see the greatest growth in our district. We talk a lot about that as a board. So a few key action strategies, I would note too, again, not comprehensive by any stretch of the imagination, but our district safety committee is critical when we talk about best practices, the review of best practices, our protocols, et cetera. Safety drill requirements, what the state requirements are, and then also what do we want as a district for requirements? Continue our research on efficiency and best practices, effective renovations. We're currently renovating our high school old office space. When we think about effective renovations, that is what I would describe, an effective renovation, and the fact that it is three classrooms, and there will be three classrooms forever, and they increase our capacity, and that's an effective renovation. Facility review committee, bringing in patrons from all around the district, once we hit a trigger point within a building to discuss future building needs, et cetera. That's a critical component as we plan for our growth and plan our facilities. And then lastly, the creation of a 20-year vision. Not only five-year plans, but let's talk about a 20-year vision. Let's talk about 20 years down the road, what we see, what we would like to look like. So those are just, again, a few key action strategies. Fiscal responsibility, focusing on the components of planning and fund balances. We must practice effective, efficient, and sustainable business practices. So these are our goals when we talk about fiscal responsibility. Conduct an annual audit. Conduct a transparent annual budget process. Utilize a five-year planning process. Develop a district 20-year growth vision. Maintain a minimum of a 15% fund balance in operating funds, and as growth permits, maintain an annual responsible deficit. So I would draw upon a couple of things. Business Manager Lundberg does a phenomenal job with the transparent annual budget process. Last month, we received our budget, preliminary budget address, et cetera, and when you look at this, some of the decisions that we make align specifically to our goals. So maintain a minimum of a 15% fund balance in operating funds. You can draw from your memory bank regarding our special ed fund, how we're talking about how that is currently low, and we are working to build that back up to ultimately be aligned to that goal. to that goal. So again, key action strategies, and a lot of these things are things that we are already doing, but we must continue to do. The annual audit budget process, five-year planning, 20-year vision, and then district growth research. Lastly, a focus on parent-community relations with a focus on engagement. So we need to strengthen school, family, and community engagement. That's the last domain that we will speak to. Ultimate goals are increase parental engagement, provide parental engagement resources and opportunities, promote positive parent, community, and district partnerships, increase business internship and apprenticeship opportunities, incorporate community businesses into post-secondary And then we have a few key action strategies. Again, parent-teacher conference innovations. When we talk about increasing parent engagement, I'd lean on our intermediate schools innovative practice, which has skyrocketed their involvement. We talk about post-secondary night, that has the potential to increase our engagement and also our involvement with parent-teacher conference at the high school level. An item that came about through some administrative council discussions, which is again, a practice to strengthen school, family, and community engagement, elementary night at a Brandon Valley High School event. So this next winter, Mr. Larson and I met this next winter at our, at some home basketball events, boys' events and girls' events. We will be hosting a Fred Assam Elementary Night in conjunction with that evening. So if you can envision this, you can envision that any parent, guardian, and/or student of the Fred Assam School District will be able to come to the ballgame for free. And at halftime of said ballgame, the voice of the links, Bob Logan, will announce that elementary building, and we'll have the principal and all those kids come out, receive a round of applause from the crowd, and we're going to plan on working with our student councils and our PTAs, and each one of those kiddos can get water, a Powerade, and a popcorn for the ballgame, et cetera. Again, it's that work to create that culture of connectedness as we grow. So that's a strategy that we're going to utilize. Reading links is an item that I would draw upon, internships and apprenticeships, and then ultimately organization collaborations. Looking forward to potential collaborations between the Chamber of Commerce, the Development Corporation, local businesses, those types of things. So that is an overview of our strategic plan, the five domains that we've identified, and then the respective components within each of those domains and our goals. With that, I would tell you that a strategic plan isn't something that you write, you put on the shelf, and you don't visit. So we will be visiting about it on a very regular basis, not only at the board level, but at the administrative council level and with our staffs. Ultimately, it's about having a continual growth mindset. We plan, we execute, we measure, we analyze, and then the cycle repeats. So with that, I certainly want to thank all of our participants that have been involved through the process, our parent focus group, a tremendous group that provided valuable insight, the administrative council who worked on this extensively on a regular basis throughout the year, who provided insight and feedback, our teacher focus group, which was our liaison council, served dual purpose, had additional meetings to provide feedback and insight, and then all of our patrons that provided feedback through the survey process, et cetera. Thank you so much for your active participation. Would certainly entertain thoughts, feedback, questions, and discussion at this point. You want some water? Yeah, I have some.
Thank you very much for everyone's hard work on this, and I know that you took the lead on this, Superintendent Larson, appreciate it very much, because strategic planning has never been a strong suit necessarily of something that board members and board membership normally do. So appreciate your leadership very much on this and look forward to hearing about it very often and putting it into practice. So if anyone has any questions for Superintendent Larson at any time, please let him know. Next, we have under general business consent items, one through 10. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented tonight, please. So moved. Second. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Personnel, again, consent items, number one through eight. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. If there's an information only with a transfer for your information, there are some building permits for review, so please do so if you choose. There are two thank you notes to the Board of Education, so please look at those. And with that, that takes us to our board reports, our formal report section. Does anyone have a formal board report that they would like to share tonight?
I guess I'll talk on transportation real quick. We met just the other evening, the other afternoon, and as a whole, you will see that daily routes have increased from, by about 100. Also, conduct reports have decreased a little bit over the past year by 40 or so, which is a good deal. And fall season procedures, like we say, we just talked about, we're cleaning up a little bit. And we are getting at least one bus or two and a minivan, or a mini bus for sure, and a car, and that's about it, I think.
So I'll note, so if you can envision when we talk about why we make the decisions we make, so we've had some conversation about, for example, I'll go back to the print shop. When we made the decision on the print shop, we talked about, why do we make the decisions we make? Efficiency. The print shop decision was about efficiency, which would align to our strategic plan. The mini bus, the purchase of a mini bus would align directly to the efficiency. So we're running multiple suburban routes that we are able to eliminate with the purchase of a mini bus, which creates an efficiency. So again, the tail of the wigs, the dog, for lack of a better phrase, when you think about strategic planning and some of the decisions that we make. So that's just an item that I would note when we think about the transportation.
Something to point out, when under Transportation Communications for 2018-19, last year, very diligently, Mr. Henshaw and Superintendent Larson worked with our ELL aides to try to communicate with those who didn't necessarily understand English very well to get the bus passes in order. That same communication, it was very effective, let's just say that. And so that will be replicated again this year, that same type of process will be put into place. So hopefully, we can, you know, again, an efficiency where we can replicate that piece and make sure everybody's on the same page before school starts. Not much to report from Alternative Ed, otherwise anyone else? I have, oh, child nutrition and wellness, we are going to the national conference in Anyone else have anything they would like to say about anything tonight? Okay, hearing none. I don't believe there are any travel reports for review, and I do not believe we have executive session. So that takes us to our, the end of our regularly scheduled agenda, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you again, everyone, for coming.